Where's Ben? Boy, this is so different.
Oh my God.
I'm live. Hot mic, how does it shut off? Are we live yet?
Tracy, got a pen? Yeah, I have my phone and my notes. Got to write them. I normally...
Okay. Do I need to... You're making me nervous. I don't have any notes. Good Lord. Tracy, fabulous. It's fabulous. Oh no. It's a pink, a pink tie.
I'll take this. I'm good.
That's funny.
Hold on a second.
Can I take this thing off?
Good to see you.
Hey, Ben. I'll say, far away.
I'm gonna catch you, brother. I'm working on it.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Fort Lauderdale. I thank you all for coming today and participating and, once again, witnessing another historic moment in our community. And so, let's begin the proceedings. So, I shall begin the meeting. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll? Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Here.
Chair Trent Tallas?
Here.
We have full attendance today. Wonderful. Must be a special day. Maybe it's a free lunch. Shall we offer that? So, anyway, it's going to be a very short meeting. This is an ordinance, second reading of OSR 120-0951, an ordinance amending the ordinance number C-18-46 of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to provide that the mayor and the city commissioners elected in regular municipal elections shall take office on the first regular meeting day in September following their elections. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending ordinance number C-18-46 of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to provide that the mayor and city commissioners elected in regular municipal elections shall take office on the first regular meeting day in December following their election and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes.
And the resolution is now, the ordinance is now approved on second reading. Well, our work is done. Meeting adjourned. We're going to have a two-minute break, and so we can rearrange some of the furniture here, and then we're going to begin the program. So, thank you so much. Thank you, folks. If we could just return to our seats, socially distance one another from each other. We can get on with our program. So, with every government event, we like to begin our program with a pledge of allegiance. So, I would ask Anna Sorensen and your two lovely daughters, if you could please come up to the center of the stage and help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I guess just one daughter. She's boycotting. Very nice. Please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Post it on YouTube. And Father Grady, if you could please join us in providing us with the invocation this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for these wonderful individuals who have stepped forward to serve our community. We ask that you imbue them with a spirit of wisdom, that they may make decisions which respect the dignity of every person, protect individual rights, and promote the common good. We also give to your care all of those who keep us safe in our city, our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and all those who keep us safe. Keep them safe, Lord. We ask this in your name. And may Almighty God bless you all, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Before you leave, Father Grady was a participant. He's the pastor at the St. Anthony's Catholic Church here in Victoria Park. And I have a proclamation, which I want to give to you in recognition of the fifth annual unity and the community grocery and turkey giveaway, which took place last week, and which we gave over a thousand neighbors food for Thanksgiving. And I want to give you this proclamation, which I'm not going to read it, but thank you so much, Father, for participating. We would like to give this to you. Okay. You may be seated. Thank you. So, now we begin with the swearing-in of elected officials. And today, each commissioner and myself have elected to ask separate individuals who would give us the honor of swearing us in separately. So, to begin, it will be myself, and followed by the commissioners. And so, I would ask Chief Judge Tudor, if you could please come to the podium. Thank you so much for doing this. Chief Judge Tudor.
All right. Good morning, everyone. And I want to congratulate all our commissioners for returning to service, and thank you for everything you've done in the community. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Give me the holdup. I, Dean Trentalis.
I, Dean Trentalis.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
I, Dean Trentalis, a citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
And being employed by...
And being employed by...
Or an officer of...
And an officer of...
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer...
As such employee or officer.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm...
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida.
Further, I, Dean Trentalis...
Further, I, Dean Trentalis...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida and city of Fort Lauderdale.
That I am a resident of the state of Florida and the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And have all the qualifications as required by the charter.
And have all the qualifications as required by the charter.
For the office or position...
For the office or position.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
By a violation of any criminal law.
By a violation of any criminal law.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of office.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. I would now like to invite Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Steve Glassman.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me as well. I, Stephen Geller.
I, Stephen Glassman.
Glassman. I just swore in the mayor.
Well, we have to, that's the mayor of Broward County.
I just swore him in last week. I still have his name on mine.
This is a take two. Take two. We have to make sure this is official.
This is official.
Okay, thank you. Take two.
All right.
All right.
They look alike, you know.
Cut the video.
I, Stephen Glassman.
Okay, here we go. Okay. I, Stephen Glassman.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
And being employed by or an officer of...
And being employed by or an officer of...
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer...
As such employee or officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
I, Stephen Glassman.
I, Stephen Glassman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
A resident of the state of Florida.
A resident of the state of Florida.
And of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And have all of the qualifications.
And have all of your qualifications.
As required by the charter or the office or position.
As required by the charter or the office or the position.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
That I have not been deprived...
That I have not been deprived...
Of my civil rights.
Of my civil rights.
By a violation of any criminal law.
By violation of any criminal law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office upon which I am now about to enter.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Judge. Congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge.
So next, I would like to invite former State Representative George Moritis, who will be swearing in his wife, Commissioner Heather Moritis.
Good morning. Semi-congratulations to all the committees.
Thank you.
To all Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank the law enforcement and for helping out so much. Thank you.
All right, Heather.
You got my name?
Your name?
I got that.
All right, we got that. We're good.
Okay, I Heather T. Moritis.
I Heather T. Moritis.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
As citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being employed by.
And being employed by.
Or an officer of.
Or an officer of.
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
The city of Fort Lauderdale.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer.
As such an employee or officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and of the state of Florida.
I Heather T. Moritis.
I Heather T. Moritis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And have all the qualifications.
And have all the qualifications.
As required by the charter.
As required by the charter.
For the office or position.
For the office or position.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
By a violation of any criminal law.
By a violation of any criminal law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office upon.
Of the office upon.
Which I am about to enter.
About which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen. Congratulations, Commissioner. And now I would, I would invite Commissioner Robert McKenzie, who I understand is going to be sworn in by his son. Good morning.
I Robert L. McKenzie. I Robert L. McKenzie, a citizen of the state of Florida, citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America and of the United States of America and being employed by. And being employed by or an officer of. Or an officer of. The city of Fort Lauderdale. The city of Fort Lauderdale. Florida. Florida, I'm sorry. The state of Florida. And, and a recipient of public funds. As recipient of public funds. As such employee or officer. Such an employee officer. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm. Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the state of Florida. And the state of Florida.
I Robert L. McKenzie. I Robert L. McKenzie. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I am a citizen of the United States. That I am a citizen of the United States. And a resident of the state of Florida. And a resident of the state of Florida. And of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And have all the qualifications. And have all of the qualifications. As required by the charter. As required by the charter. For the office or position. For the office or position. Upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I'm about to enter. That I have not been deprived of my civil rights. That I have been not deprived of my civil rights. By a violation of any criminal law. By a violation of any criminal law. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution. The Constitution of the state of Florida. Constitution of the state of Florida. And the laws and ordinance. And laws and ordinances. Of the city, of the city of Fort Lauderdale. Of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And that I will fulfill, perform, and that I will truly perform, the duties of the office, the duties of the office, upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I am about to enter. So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ryan McKenzie.
Congratulations, Commissioner. And last, but certainly not least, we invite Commissioner Ben Sorenson, who will be given his oath of office by his lovely wife, Anna. And kids. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up.
Can we bake in some chores for this, too?
It's a great photo op.
I Ben Sorenson.
I Ben Sorenson.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being employed by.
And being employed by.
Or an officer of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Or an officer of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer.
As such employee or officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I Ben Sorenson.
I Ben Sorenson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
And of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
And have all the qualifications.
And have all the qualifications.
As required by the charter.
As required by the charter.
For the office or position.
For the office or position.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
That I have not been deprived of my civil rights.
By a violation of any criminal law.
By violation of any criminal law.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon the office of which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me Lord. So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Good job. Good job, ladies. Good job. Daddy's girl.
For now.
For now. Wonderful. So now each of, each and every one of us have been sworn in, and we are now going to be returning to another four years as members of the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale. Congratulations. So I'd like to take this moment to thank everybody who voted in this election. It was an absolute record turnout, and to thank everyone for returning me to office as the city of Fort Lauderdale as your mayor. Thank you so much for that. As November 5th showed us, we had a tremendous turnout at the election polls. This is the first time we've ever seen so many people vote in a city election. Over 85,000 people voted to elect their mayor, as well as the city commissioner, in this case, was the vice mayor and myself. And this was truly historic because we changed the vote cycle. Instead of voting in March of each, of every third year, we now vote in the presidential election cycle every four years. So we certainly became part of the national dialogue, and, and the results were clear, and we thank everybody. But the, and not only was the election date changed, the, the voice of the people was loud and clear. Voters overwhelmingly supported our shared vision for the city's future. The state of our city is strong, and our future is bright. We have been tested this past year like no city commission has ever been tested before. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic virus, we've certainly had to do our best to take on this challenge and accept the responsibility that we had as a commission in moving forward and seeing through to the encouragement of those who were out of work and to ensure people that their health was going to be maintained and stabilized by those who sit on this commission. Addressing this deadly and contagious virus has been our top priority. We put the health of our residents first and led the way with responsible and reasonable measures to control and the spread of, so businesses and services could reopen and people could get back to work. We truly have been a leader in these endeavors, from avoiding a spring break super-spreader, remember that, back in March, an event that really marked the beginning of the struggle that we took on. We have worked with our business community to ensure safe practices, and for those in real need, we partnered with our neighboring cities and have distributed thousands of food boxes, a practice that continues every week at Mills Pond Park. With recent announcements that vaccines will soon be available, hope does lie ahead. We will work closely with our regional and state partners to distribute vaccines quickly and efficiently, efficiently, with a focus first on frontline workers and those who are most vulnerable. At the same time, we must do everything we can to ensure that our economy regains the robustness that existed before the virus appeared. Until those vaccines are widely available, though, we must maintain our vigilance against this disease. We have seen too many examples lately of residents letting down their guard and not wearing masks and not practicing social distancing. We must continue to maintain these common sense rules a little while longer until we get past that curve. Vigilance is important. We have also been tested as a community by the immediate need to upgrade in aging and rapidly deteriorating infrastructure. Remember that? We have proven ourselves up to the challenge. Under a very aggressive schedule set by this commission, there are more than 150 infrastructure projects that are presently underway to bring our water and sewer systems up to date. Old pipes are being replaced and others reinforced. The replacement of the 50-year-old sewer main in our city's core has passed the midway point. Yes, two contractors have been working simultaneously to get this job done as fast as possible and with as little neighborhood disruption as possible. And I have to take a moment and thank our city staff, our city manager, Chris Lagerblum, and his team, everybody who worked on this, and our contractors for making this happen. New lift stations are being built, and we also are working on plans to build a bigger and better water treatment plant. Yes, we will no longer have yellow water in Fort Lauderdale. So what lies ahead in the post-COVID-19 world? What is important to our city? We must ensure these infrastructure improvements are completed and continued. Nothing is more crucial and more critical to our city remaining a great place to live, a great place to work, and a great place to visit. But I think we also need to return to the fundamentals of what makes us such a wonderful community. First, we are the Venice of America. It is our beaches and waterways that make us so attractive. That's why it pained me to see the impact of the repeated breaks in our sewer system. We must clean up our rivers and our canals, and we need to fulfill our promise to undertake regular testing of waterway cleanliness. We have neglected our waterways far too long, for decades. As a coastal community, we must step up our efforts to address climate change. Tropical Storm Ada and recent King ties have clearly demonstrated the need for significant improvement to our stormwater system. Construction is commencing to better protect low-line neighborhoods by adding tidal control valves, storm drain systems, pump stations, and catch basins. And we are building new seawalls. Still, we must also remain nimble to ensure that work is advanced as quickly as possible in the neighborhoods most impacted by the flooding, as we've seen recently. We also pride ourselves as being a community that embraces diversity. As such, we need to find resolutions to the difficult issues surrounding race and law enforcement. But I am proud of the men and women who work hard each day to keep our community safe, but that doesn't mean we cannot do better. I anticipate the city manager will soon finish the process of installing a permanent leadership at the police department. We also need to engage the citizen police review board, national experts, our police officers, and our community in a meaningful discussion of reform, so that we can ensure that everyone is treated fairly and equally and with full transparency. Another matter facing our city in this coming term is that we have the ability to forge a new vision for our downtown. It's a rare opportunity that many communities wish they could have. Let's look boldly to the future and create a walkable, vibrant downtown that speaks strongly of who we are as a community. Recent private development has created an urban core that could not have been foreseen even a decade ago. Now, our job is to ensure that this becomes truly an urban village and craft an exciting public realm for the entire area. The renovation of the historic Parker Playhouse will be completed soon. It's exciting. And thanks to the overwhelming approval by the voters on the Parks Bond, we can continue to enhance the downtown and neighborhood experience, such as moving forward to complete the work on the Tunneltop Park on La Solas Boulevard, and setting aside new open spaces, such as our recent vote to purchase land along the Tarpon River. Moreover, the city's arrangement with the Florida Panthers hockey team is moving forward to renovate the War Memorial Auditorium. The Panthers are making a multi-million, multi-million dollar investment to add rinks for ice skating and hockey and to restore the existing interior for concerts and family-friendly programming. I'm also extremely pleased that the federal courthouse will remain downtown. This has been a dicey subject for more than a decade. There was a point at which the court could have closed, and all the judges assigned to either Miami or Palm Beach. But I can say that I'm very confident that the federal government is close to choosing a site downtown for a new courthouse, and this is exciting news for us. But we can go further. There is the future of the old one-stop-shop. We'll all agree that more park space is needed downtown, and there is no more ideal place than there. The question is what form that park space takes and how best to activate the entire site. Fort Lauderdale is the seat of government for Broward County, and a key piece shaping the vibrancy and appeal of the downtown for the coming decades is what happens to our government buildings. Both City Hall and the Broward County Government Center have outlived their lifespan and faced serious and costly structural issues. We have been working for a couple of years now on the concept of a joint government campus. This could be a real jewel, an anchor to the urban core that signifies the area's transformation. This process must be expedited, and whether we work together with the county or go our own way, we must think boldly in designing any new buildings, as well as repurposing the existing properties that we have. Another critical component of the new downtown is commuter rail. COVID-19 brought at least a temporary end to the Bright Line service between Miami and West Palm, but the pause has allowed us to discuss more in-depth what the future looks like for public transportation. Given the traffic congestion in South Florida, we need to move ahead with a more localized commuter rail, more so than what Bright Line was previously envisioned to accomplish. Miami-Dade County has led the way with a recent agreement that would create multiple local stops along the Florida East Coast Railroad tracks in its jurisdiction. We need to follow suit. The Bright Line station downtown could be a hub of a service within Broward of stops at the International Airport and communities to our north and south, and well beyond Palm Beach and Miami. This is, however, where real decision-making becomes complex. And again, we must act with vision for the long term. A choke point that exists with the commuter rail, the crossing at the New River. We simply cannot have increased rail traffic over this old bridge as the impact on our important marine industry would just be too great. The designs for a new bridge that I've seen are horrendous. I do not want to cleave our community in half, nor do I want our efforts to create an upscale downtown marred and a new government campus left oddly out of place against a high-rise train trestle. That's why I have advocated a tunnel. It would be the best solution with the long-term view of downtown in mind. We need to better examine the feasibility and cost of such an undertaking rather than just rely on back-of-the-napkin thoughts and that from which we are now working. And it is truly proven that a tunnel is if it is proven that a tunnel isn't practical or too costly, we can at least make sure that whatever bridge design we come up to is integrated with the existing infrastructure that we have and it benefits the beauty of our downtown. There are other initiatives ahead of us as well. Let's look forward to finally having a grand opening of the soccer stadium at Lockhart, right Commissioner? Our aquatic center, yes, the Aquatic Center renovation is moving forward nicely and will feature a twenty-seven-meter dive tower and that will be the highest in the hemisphere. Mike Albetta, I'll be joining you in that for a second. You know, the the Aquatic Center has been a one of the most important features in Fort Lauderdale's history. And I'm so proud that our commission finally took the step forward to return the Aquatic Center to its full glory and to continue to working with the folks at the International Swimming Hall of Fame in rebuilding their new their their new buildings and and their new museum. All this is very exciting for our community and once again will return Fort Lauderdale as the epicenter of world competition in swimming and diving, so we should be very proud of that effort. The community also voted to rebuild our police headquarters. Let's move forward and begin to redesign its replacement and ensure that we'll build the best station for the least cost so that we can attack the challenges that the police department today have in this twenty-first century. And we need to intensify our efforts to confront the persistent issues of homelessness and affordable housing. With the pandemic forcing so many out of work and onto the streets, we have a special responsibility to help those in need, especially folks with children. I call upon our fellow cities, yes, our fellow cities and our county government to reach out and lend us a hand in this task. We owe it to our commitment to humanity. We also need to lobby the county to ensure the one-cent transportation sales tax is spent to resolve significant transportation issues, including the synchronization of traffic lights. Who's who wants that, right? Yes. Traffic is a concern that never seems to go away. The popularity of our city continues to grow, but so does the congestion. We can no longer sit on our hands and do nothing. It's time to act and to act now. So despite the setbacks dealt by COVID, Fort Lauderdale is a city on the move. We have so much to be proud of, great neighborhoods, the distinction as a world-renowned tourist destination, our beautiful beaches and waterways, our thriving marine industry, and our incredible nightlife. We accomplished a lot recently and more progress lies lies ahead. But I would be remiss if I did not also speak about community. The people of this community who made up the civic associations, homeowners associations, condo associations, and those who live and work in our community day in and day out. It's through their strength and commitment to Fort Lauderdale that continues to make us great. So I want to thank my fellow members on the city commission as well as our staff. Thank you, everyone, Commissioner Sorenson, Vice Mayor, what is it, Glassman? Yes. Commissioner McKenzie and Commissioner Maritis. And we thank everybody in our police department and our firefighters for all the work that you do on behalf of our community to keep us safe. And and again, a shout out to our city manager, Chris Lagerblum and his staff, all the people that work in our city, over twenty-five hundred employees. Thank you all for what you do day in and day out to make Fort Lauderdale the great place that it is. So let twenty-one twenty-twenty-one be the year that twenty-twenty just wasn't, right? So let's grab onto those stars that escaped our reach this year. I look forward to our working together to make these things happen. So God bless you all, God bless America, and thank you for being here today. So I'd like to take this opportunity to, if any, I'll start with our vice mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you want to share a few remarks with us?
Thank you, Mayor, and I I echo all of your sentiments. I wanted just to thank everyone for being here today and especially some of the invited guests that I have with me because you mentioned community and we have our community leaders from the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations. Thank you, so pleased you could be here. My husband Randy, and I would be so remiss if I did not just say a very big thank you to Celia Gislyson and Batima Raju, my office staff. I I could not do this job without those wonderful young ladies and I appreciate every moment of their work every single day, so thank you. It is an absolute honor and a privilege to serve in this role in our beautiful city. I take the work so seriously and I I absolutely love the people that I meet on a daily basis. And I want to thank our staff, as you did, Mayor, from city manager and all of our charter offices on down for the work that you do every day to keep our city moving and support and implement the policies that the commission initiates. Of course, our first responders, our police and our fire, so vital to the safety and the health of our public. I want to congratulate my colleagues. It's an absolute pleasure and an honor to serve with each and every one of you. I do so appreciate the time and the wisdom that each of you bring to the dais and of course, our community. And I just wanted to also thank our host today, the Broward Center for the Performing Arts, for hosting us in this venue. Kelly Shanley, I don't know if you're still here, but thank you very much. This town would be nothing without venues like the Broward Center for the Performing Arts. Our arts and our culture are so vital to the quality of life and the success of our community, so I thank you. In short, I look forward to the next four years. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We have to continue the good work that you've mentioned, Mayor, that we have accomplished. Yesterday, or was it the day before, we said good riddance to hurricane season and now I'm looking forward to saying good riddance to twenty-twenty. And here's to brighter days ahead. And again, I thank you all for your support and your friendship and your love. Thank you very much, everyone.
Commissioner Sorenson, do you have a few thoughts to share with us?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Want to echo all that's been said and and thank Mayor for serving with you. It's been an honor and I look forward to four more years and Vice Mayor as well and Commissioner McKenzie and Commissioner Maritis. It's it's just been great and I feel like we've done so much together. And it's just it blows my mind when I look at all we've done and I look forward to to continuing in that path. And most especially, I want to thank my my family, Anna, my wonderful wife, I love you, and thank Alex and Louise for putting up with Daddy and 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 helping Mom when Dad's gone and meetings and doing things. So I love you all and and really appreciate you all being part of this team. And I'd also like to thank our our team at City Hall, Juan Saavedra and Alex Heathcock. Alex isn't here, but thank you both for being the team that's working. Yeah, give him a hand for all your work and interaction with, you know, it it makes our jobs doable. And as has been mentioned, like to just Chris, our amazing city manager. As as a commission, we've brought on a new city manager, Chris Lagerblum. And Chris, stand up and like to give you a round of applause for all your awesome work. Mayor, I think it was our first meeting where we brought Alan Boalow on on an interim basis to be our city attorney. And Alan, please stand up. You've done amazing, amazing job.
Thank you for your work. Commissioner, is that still interim? Is that still interim?
I think we made it. I think we made it permanent.
We made it permanent.
Maybe still slightly probationary, but he's doing just amazing, amazing work that has helped really make all of this possible. And Alan's oftentimes a behind-the-scenes guy that really drives things forward and I just really appreciate that. Those are our two constitutional officers. Our third is Jeff Modarelli, Jeff, the city clerk, doing fantastic work. A lot of times you just hear him reading things, but he does so much more than that. Jeff, thank you for your work. Want to give you a hand. And then our our last constitutional officer who is not here and sacrificed his seat so that we could have family members here, which I really appreciate, John Hurst, our city auditor. And if you could just give John a hand, just does great, great work for our city. And and as Ben said, we are nothing if we don't have an amazing fire rescue led by Chief Kerr in the house. Chief, get up, let's give you a hand. Amazing job, Chief. Chief just had her birthday, twenty-nine years old, doing amazing. Many more years left in service. Thank you, Chief. And our woman-led first responders, don't just stop with Chief Kerr, continues with interim chief Karen Dietrich, who's not here. We got Chief Alvarez here on her behalf, so I just want to give the police department great gratitude for for all their work and perseverance. And then our city staff, I mean, this you being a commissioner for me is just such a joy and to be able to help people, to be able to be part of, whether it's little things like helping with fixing a a street or helping get a light turned back on, none of that is possible without the amazing city staff we have. And and Chris Lagerblum has done an amazing job of bringing department heads in our city who drive results get. They treat residents with respect, they respond to them, they help them. If we didn't have this amazing city staff, there's there's not much I could do and I won't be much, much use to anyone. And it's the city staff who really actually does the job day in and day out. And so I just thank the city staff for their tireless efforts. And Chris, you're driving that result, so I thank you and thanks city staff. So give the city staff a hand. Then, as was mentioned, Kelly Shanley and Shelley, where's Shelley? Shelley, get up, Shelley with Broward Center. Thank you, Shelley. And and lastly, I I want to thank our veterans of our of the country and our service members, the men and women who stepped forward, who put their lives on the line and sacrificed for our country. We have veterans and and active service members in our police, in fire, throughout city government and in our community. And it's those individuals who are willing to make those sacrifices that make our country the amazing place that it is and that lift up democracy and freedom. So I just thank you for that. I thank you all for being part of this. I thank all our residents, our city, or sorry, our community leaders like Jackie Scott, who's here and and other leaders that are doing amazing work in our community day in and day out. And I look forward to four more years of working together, of making Fort Lauderdale even a greater place. Thank you all. May God bless our city, may God bless each one of you, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKenzie, would you have a few words to share with us tonight?
I want to follow the instructions that were given to me to come speak in the center. Mike, does it mean you all did not do that?
Excuse me, Commissioner, when we arrived today, we were told that that was changed. I'll have to ask city staff that we were told to remain seated.
Commissioner, you can speak wherever you want. Don't listen to this together.
I'm sure he will.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of you who are here present today, it's bittersweet for me. It's bittersweet for me. It's my fourth swearing-in, Mayor. First was with you down on the beach. This is my last swearing-in at the city of Fort Lauderdale. I've learned one thing over the years that you you write a speech down, keep one in your head, you keep one in your pocket. Because when you go behind dynamic speakers of the ones who've just spoken, they'll say all the things you wanted to say. They'll say all the things that need to be noted. So I'm going with my heart today. This is bittersweet. It's like when Michael Jordan sat on the sofa and did the last dance. This is the last dance. The last dance. Wingman. Last dance. Last dance. Python, Ben Sorenson. Thank you. Last dance. Mayor, I'm sorry, the people's mayor, Dean Trentalis. Last dance. Alan Wallo. Last dance. Chris Lagerblum. Last dance. Jeff Modarelli. Last dance. John Hurst. Last dance. Police. Last dance. Fire. Last dance. Parks and Recreation. Last dance. Public Works. Those are some of the people that, as Commissioner Sorenson said, that make us look good day in, day out. They do the work. We come up with a vision and we give it to them and they make it work, so. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for this last dance. There's two parts to Michael Jordan's series, too. He retired and he came back for three more championships. I'll be leaving here going for a quest for Broward County Commission to represent the city at the county. Three more chances at it. Three more chances at it to still represent Fort Lauderdale and Broward County, a place I love and cherish for fifty-eight years. Thank you to my God, my family, and again, my colleagues and the community for all of your support. I want to thank my staff, my media staff. Tracy Roach, stand up. My latest addition, Vaughn Howard, stand up. I even want to thank the last commission that I served with, Bruce Roberts, Dean Trentalis, Mayor Jack Salin. Romney Rogers, who I learned a lot from, a lot, and that's why I have this little cheat sheet here. He said a number of things and he had all of his goals on a piece of paper. This is an attorney. And for all those years, he would check off if he would accomplish something. And the last night, the last commission, he had that paper and he shared it with me. He goes, you got to come out the gates fast, got to write it down, you got to keep checking, Chris. You got to keep checking until you get the last one done. And I learned a lot from him, so I want to thank that commission. But tonight, it's the first time my mom's not with me. She's been at all three of my swearing-ins. I was appointed first, then I ran, then I ran again, and I was on a pole this time, but this is the fourth one. This is the one that my mom's not physically able to make it, but she's here in spirit, heart, and mind. This one's for her. What's what's even more special today, in all those swearing-ins, I had three judges to swear me in. And my most proudest moment today is having my youngest son, because my other three kids are gone. They graduated and they never come back home, but they call for money. They call for money still, but they don't come back home, but having Ryan McKenzie, the youngest McKenzie, stand up, Ryan. Be here today far outweighs the power of a judge when you have the flowing of blood to swear you in. I love you, son. Here's a kid that, seventeen, senior at St. Thomas. Age of fifteen, finally he had a heart condition, underwent heart surgery to make it better. Became a part of a study, a cardiologist, so that his condition other parents and kids could learn from. When you see those football players collapsing and dying from the overex When you see those football players collapsing and dying from the overexerting of their energy and their exercising, that artery shuts down, they die. But each and every diagnosed one at birth had that condition. Ryan, fortunately, God blessed him. Nothing happened. And typically, they die within a couple of months of birth. He was 15, diagnosed. Doctors assured us he'd be a normal, healthy kid. And today, I am so proud that he swore me in, Mayor. He's my proud, healthy, happy kid. And I love you and thank you all. This is the last dance.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. And now Commissioner Maritis.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Gosh, it's so great to be here again. I want to thank God for this opportunity to serve. I want to thank God that I'm the only elected official who has never received a vote. So I know you were really happy that you received a record number of votes this year. I have never received one vote and we'll keep it that way.
You always have my vote.
I am waiting for my congratulatory letter. I think we're working on that because no one even sent me a letter saying congratulations. I don't think anyone knows I'm an elected official.
It's in the mail.
So my family, my husband, George, it was an honor having you swear me in again. Thank you for doing that. My daughters Alexis and Catherine, I'm so thankful college is online because they are here now. So that's super exciting. And Ben, you're going to blink your eyes. Your two little ones will turn into two grown ones in college calling you for money on a regular basis.
I told you.
Yeah, it happens, right? Even though Roberts are away, I know they're calling him still.
Every week.
Yeah, every couple of weeks, right. I want to thank, my mom's not here today either. She was here last time. George's parents were here. And this is a different event today. It's much smaller. It's just a different year, but it's just as special. For me, what's most special about today is I get to do it all over again with the four of you all. I didn't know how much I would enjoy working with you. I would have done this sooner if I knew how much fun it would have been. But then I wouldn't have been with you. My red dress is turned purple because of you all. Yes. Don't tweet that, anyone. I'm a big GOP fan, honey. My good chair.
Progress has come to Fort Lauderdale.
I know. Sorry. It's my, it's blank in the background. Anyway, so hey, I'm happy to be purple. I'm just going to say that, actually. You can tweet that. Anyways, now I forget what I said. Once again, so happy. One of the greatest things I got to work on the past three years was with Stephanie Toothaker. And wow, what an exciting year when we got to bring Inter Miami and David Beckham, actually, or David Beckham to Inter Miami, something like that, that order, to Fort Lauderdale. And we are so thankful to have the Inter Miami here playing. And now, you mentioned a lot about downtown, Mayor. Of course, we have uptown. And we all know about uptown and it's on the map, especially with Inter Miami Soccer Stadium and the new 28th Park Community Center we will be building soon, as well as many other opportunities that will be coming to that part of District One, which I'm happy to represent and work on. And I love doing that for my neighbors and with my neighbors every day. So it's an honor to be with you all. I know we talked about city staff and police, fire. Love you all very much and so appreciative for you. You've had to do, you know, a hero's job this year with the pandemic and it was so uncertain. And whether you rescuing people or keeping order, it was just a new normal that you all really handled flawlessly. And, you know, most of the time, it was a tough year. So I appreciate you and appreciate being able to work with you all. I slept at night because of Chris and his team. Greg, welcome to the team. Yeah, we're so happy you're here too, your new addition this year. And once again, like all the other commissioners said, we couldn't do it without you all. Most importantly, my two staff, Melissa and Lauren, love you all too. And like the other commissioners said, we could not do what we do without our staff. So thank you all for coming today. We appreciate it. It is smaller, a little bit more intimate. So happy to be at the Broward Center. I'm the season ticket holder and it was very sad this year. But you know what? I'll buy the tickets again next year, next season, and we'll be back again. And we can't wait to get back to normal. Thank you all.
So that almost concludes the end of our program, but I just want to finish off by saying a couple of things. First of all, very Phil Donahue, right? So.
That's a long time ago, Mayor.
I know, I know. I'm old. So this is a moment when I know everyone has thanked our staff and our community and everything. But, you know, I've been a commissioner for a long time and, or I should say, on this commission for a long time. My first time I was on this commission was in 2003 and it was a whole different city back then. In fact, commissioners shared commission assistance. We had one for like every three people. And we maybe got one or two emails a week from folks in the community asking for things to be done. But, you know, it's a totally different community today. Our city has grown. Our community has become more aware of the excitement that is about to happen and they want to be part of things. But I can't tell you how challenging it is as a member of this commission and as mayor to have, to now take on this responsibility. It has become increasingly more and more responsible. I think all the reality is but the reality is, and it was said by each one of these members of the commission, that nothing could really have been accomplished without our staff. And I saved till the very end my appreciation for the people that Chief of Staff, Scott Wyman. Scott, stand up. If it wasn't for Scott, this city would not be running. I'm sorry, Chris. But Scott, thank you so much for everything that you do and everything you've done. And also, our outreach coordinator, Zach, where are you? Zach Duran. Thank you so much for everything the two of you do and your ability to work together and to be able to respond to commission and mayor responsibilities. This is important because every member of our commission staff works so hard every day. I know each and every one of you and the importance that you make and the importance that you have been able to, I don't know, you just have helped the city become the greater city that we continue to see each day. And I have to say that, you know, they are the backbone of each member of this commission. And I know that Scott and Zach certainly helped make the position of mayor be much more accomplished, much more fulfilling. And we couldn't do it without you. So Scott, thank you so much for everything that you do. And Zach, thank you. You take great pictures, Zach. So. But this is, this is who we are, the City Commissioner of Fort Lauderdale. One more round of applause. Thank you all for being here. And now our next meeting is at 1:30. You're all welcome to attend, either in person or by Zoom. And now we're going to have a reception. Where's the reception?
Courtyard.
At the courtyard. So you're all welcome to participate. Thank you, everybody, for being here.